Okay, we're back in session.
Thank you, Secretary Davis. So just to provide members of the public a brief update, it appears that there are some updates to webinar, the WebEx webinar system. And so we apologize for all of the back and forth and the waiting. What we've decided to do is post the panelist password on the website. And so it is not yet up there, it will be up there momentarily. And you will be able to use the panelist password to access the webinar. And at that time, you can write, post a comment in the chat asking to make public comment. You will not be able to unmute yourself. Secretary Davis will unmute you when it is your time and call on your name accordingly. But please stand by for just a couple more minutes while we put that password on the website. It will mean that if you are attending virtually, you will have to likely sign out and then sign back in with the appropriate panelist password. So I'll repeat all of this, just bear with us for a couple more minutes. We do apologize for the change, but we want to make sure that we've got you all the access you need. Okay. Okay. For folks who would like to make public comment by using the panelist password, it is now available on the SF, excuse me, on the Elections Commission website, on our meeting page. We'll give everyone just a moment to be able to access that, sign out of the webinar, and then join back as a panelist so that you can, so that we can elevate you accordingly for public comment. So we'll just give it about, about one more minute. And then we'll go back to Agenda Item Number Four for public comment. We'll close out Agenda Item Number Four, and then we'll go back to Agenda Item Number Two for General Public Comment.
When you click the link, it asks you for to type in your email address. You have to like, maybe we can have them type in like, sometimes like Lucy's or just maybe like john@example.com kind of thing.
Yeah. It's in the agenda. I mean.
Okay, for, for members of the public, the one caveat with the troubleshooting, the solution that we have come to is that you will have to provide an email address. We can, we can, you may be able to use a dummy email if you'd like to remain anonymous. Otherwise, we do, we may have to just ask that you provide your comment via email otherwise, because we do need to continue to move forward.
I think, I think she's going to have to add another email address. I, you know what I'm saying, but it's, and if you do Maurice's email address, it has to be through the S. I don't have access to the media. Like, I can't configure it from here.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your patience, and we do apologize for still continuing to try and fix this for you.
Can you look at any panelists?
There's, you know, there's, any option.
No, I mean, like in the same way that she invited.
I know, I sent her, I told her to log off.
That's okay, but the thing is, when you, when you log into the account, so you have to provide an email address.
Can they per, do public@public@home?
Well, yeah, we need to add this. Panelists, you know, to the media configuration and, is there, I mean, yeah, there. So why don't we do like, could be like.
We got one that.
Oh, so just, I mean, I was thinking we could just have like, you know, SF.
Why don't, why don't we, I think the easier route is if folks want to come out of here and, right, just.
Go to webinar info and.
And then just copy the places.
So people need to tell folks that they need to be able to provide an email address.
We're gonna see if this works and then.
No, 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 go back to webinar. Yeah.
In other words, whether a dummy one works?
Well, I did create one, a dummy one, SF@example.com.
Should work then, right? I mean, WebEx doesn't care if it's a real email.
But people form like that, so.
Yeah.
Or exit out of the chat.
Is there no text support tonight?
Hmm.
Is there no text support tonight?
I guess go back. Oh, the problem is it's very hard for them to fix things in real time.
It's also set up correctly.
Yeah. It's probably a bug.
Oh, that, that's.
If they just updated the software, it's probably.
Okay. Great. So.
I have no idea.
So I'm gonna just use the.
That's probably a.
I just assuming more than, the dummy can use more than once, so I think it should be, or, I'll just update the website. So.
Then can more than one person use the dummy email, though?
I think so, because I've logged in twice.
Okay, let's, let's mute that member of the public.
Okay, so somebody called in.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So just to give everyone yet another update, you, if you would like to make public comment, you may use the panelist password that is currently listed on the Elections Commission website next to the Agenda Item, Agenda on today's meeting. There is a dummy email address that is sf@example.com, and you may use that to log in. And Secretary Davis will call on you when you are, when it is your turn to speak.
Okay, we appear to have a call in.
Wonderful.
And I'm going to unmute now. It is just by a phone number, so I am unsure of the attendee's name. Okay, so I'm gonna give, I'm gonna unmute and give you three minutes. Two, three, eight are the first three numbers after four, one, five. And here we go. Okay, you should be able to.
We can hear you.
Oh, hi.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Oh, doesn't Jen say with illegal one voters, San Francisco, it's a way to, I wasn't able to log in through the password that was given for the WebEx, so the call-in works.
Thank you very much. So I suppose then, for the purposes of moving forward with public comment, please use the dial-in going forward.
Oh, but the only issue is that you still on the web, on the webpage, you updated the event password, the seven, eight, nine, nine, seven, four, under online. But under the phone section, you still have to update the correct password. But if you look at the Agenda page, you'll see two passwords for the online and the, and the phone. So for the phone, you have to dial the number that's under online in the parentheses, a seven, eight number, instead of the five, five, eight number that's listed on the phone, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you very much. We are fixing that now. We really appreciate your input. And we really appreciate everyone's patience, and we especially appreciate Secretary Davis's efforts to rectify all of our tech issues.
Okay, do you, you still have a minute left. Do you have any public comments other than the tech issues?
Oh, no, I didn't raise my hand for the, for the Agenda item. I just thought back on the, the phone situation.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. The password has been updated accordingly, so please just refresh the page. Okay, let's go back to public comment. There is, is there an additional public comment?
Yes, we have an additional public comment here. I'm going to unmute Mike Stone, and you'll have.
That's my partner, he's not making comments.
Then we have no emails and no.
Dedicated support.
No people have turned up as a panelist other than our original. We sent him, we put his.
Mr. Turner, if you'd like to make public comment, it appears that the dial-in might be a better alternative.
I think let's wait to give him the opportunity to give plug comments if he wanted to. But then we should move on.
Yes. Okay, but one more minute, and then we'll move forward.
I did. Now, the link to the join the meeting takes you to a page that does not allow you to enter a password. That's what it says.
Okay. Okay. We're gonna close out Agenda Item Number Four. For members of the public who did not have the opportunity to provide public comment, please accept my apologies that this has been so challenging. It is not for a lack of effort. I can assure you by everyone in this room, we really want to ensure you have that opportunity. If you had wanted to make it, weren't able to, please don't hesitate to email us. Again, it is elections commission at sfgov.org, and we will ensure that it is included and that the members of the commission all have access to your comment. So with that, we're gonna close out Agenda Item Number Four. We are gonna go back to Agenda Item Number Two and retake General Public Comment on any issue within our jurisdiction that is not covered by another item on this agenda. Secretary Davis, can you let me know if there are any public commenters?
We emailed one person trying to chat, and they would have to log off and log back on as a panelist. But there are no comments in the comment other than people not being able to raise their hand. And no other panelists are on except for the ones that were already acknowledged.
I'm also happy to read out my own personal, my sfgov email, which is robin, R-O-B-I-N-stone, S-T-O-N-E, at sfgov.org if you would like to submit your public comment that way as well. Okay, I think we should close out Agenda Item Number Two and move to Agenda Item Number Five. Commissioners Reports: Discussion and Possible Action on Commissioners Reports for Topics Not Covered by Another Item on This Agenda. Meetings with Public Officials, Oversight and Observation Activities, Long-Range Planning for Commission Activities in Areas of Study, Proposed Legislation Which Affect Elections and Others. Commissioners, I will open this up. Does anyone have a report they would like to share? Vice President Giordano.
Yes, so I have five things to report. So the, the US Department of State has an exchange program. It's called the International Visitor Leadership Program, and they reached out to President Stone and invited a few people to speak to a number of international visitors who are observing elections in San Francisco, and they're mostly from Central and South America. So President Stone couldn't attend, but I attended and I, I spoke to them for about an hour. This was a few weeks ago, and just kind of answered questions, just gave them an overview of how elections here work. And secondly, I've noticed a few bugs in the SF, the new commission's new website. And the, these are things that affect all the different commissions' websites, not just ours. So I've been letting Digital Services know about those issues. And so they're gonna be working on fixing some of them. Like, one of the issues is that meetings don't show up as canceled. So that's just something else. Thirdly, this is something that Director Ernst also mentioned, but Digital Services let me know that they're gonna be rolling out a new method of archiving the old website. And that's so that we're not gonna have to go back to the Internet Archives website. It should be a smoother experience. And that's gonna be rolled out over the next, I think, six months, but we might, we might get to try it within the next few months or so. I also wanted to just let people know I'm, I'm still working on the annual report, and I'm just finding time to do that this summer. And then the last two things are, I attached two memos to the packet today. The first memo is related to a letter that the commission sent to the Secretary of State back in January 2022. And it was a letter about a report on some vulnerabilities in Dominion's voting system that was written in the context of a court case in Georgia. And this is a report that was written by Dr. Haldeman, who was also a guest at one of our meetings this year in February. And at the time, back in January 2022, that report had not been made public. So we were encouraged to contact the Secretary of State to find out if at least we could be, learn about the contents of that report. So President Bernholtz wrote the letter for us after we authorized her. But, so the news is that just a couple weeks ago, that report has finally been made public. And my memo, you know, provides the link to the report and also a blog post that Dr. Haldeman wrote about it. And the last thing I want to mention is, it's the second memo that I wrote, which was about the, the ordinance that is before the border supervisors to opt out of AB 1416. And I just wanted to share some information I learned about the ordinance and also some materials that Director Ernst shared with the committee. And for example, there's a mock-up of, of what the ballot looks like with the labels that I don't think we've seen before. And also, I learned from an article I found online how some of the other counties are handling the situation. I know it seems like some of the larger counties like LA, Orange County, and Santa Clara are all staying opted in the, the state bill. And just the last, I, I do think it would have been nice if we had had a chance to discuss the ordinance before it was introduced, because I, I think there are some alternatives we could have explored and talked about it. But it's kind of too late now, but I just wanted to at least share the information that I, I found. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Giordano. Commissioner Dai.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Commissioner Giordano, that I found the, the report, Dr. Haldeman's report, very disturbing in terms of what's, what's happening in, in Georgia and the fact that the software's not gonna be updated. Of course, Director Ernst, we here in San Francisco have kept our software updated, I'm sure, right? For the image cast.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
So if, if you had a chance to read the.
I have not.
Yeah. One of the comments in Dr. Haldeman's report, blog post about it, was that Secretary Raffensperger had announced that Georgia would not update, update the Dominion software until after the 2024 presidential election, even though there were all these vulnerabilities that were found.
Yeah, I hadn't read the report, but the Georgia, the, the Georgia equipment and software's not the same as what we're using in San Francisco, so it's not a true comparison of systems. But I have to read the report. I, I don't wanna go into this any deeper than, than that comment, so.
Right, but it's our, I'm sure it's our, your department's policy that we would update software when there's a security vulnerability, and it's pushed out by the company. We would, we would update it, right?
Well, yeah, the updates go through Secretary State's office.
Okay.
And so if, if the Dominion has an update for its system, even if it was specific to a county, and we've had that in San Francisco in relation to ranked choice voting, even, even the county-specific upgrade would have to go through Secretary State's office for review and approval. And then, and then once it was approved, then we could make the upgrade.
Got it. And I guess my other comment on Commissioner Giordano on, on AB 1416, there's some astonishing percentage of voters who don't read anything until they're actually in the, actually voting. I don't know if anyone knows what that percentage is, but it's pretty high, that percentage of voters who don't read anything in advance, but they go and they vote and they read there. So I think that was the intent of AB 1416, is to catch those voters that, that don't read the voter information pamphlet, especially ours, which is extremely long. So I do think that's something that, you know, if we could save a million dollars from printing the extra ballot card, I mean, I'd rather see that, that information's available to people there and save the money on the printing of the voter information pamphlet, which I suspect a lot of people don't actually open, so.
Point of clarification, Commissioner Dai, I just want to make sure I understood what you were saying, because I, I, yeah, I want to make sure you're saying, I understood what you're saying. Are you saying that the cost, you see benefit in a cost-saving measure being putting the opponents and proponents on the card and not in the voter information packet?
I'm not saying that we shouldn't put the information in the voter information packet. What I'm saying is, we've been talking about going green in the campaign that the Department of Elections is running, and how much we would save by not printing so many voter information pamphlets. Of course, we'd want to print a minimum number, get them out to the library. And, and the people who, who actually read it, but I suspect there's a large percentage of people, they immediately toss it. And for those people, you know, who only look at the, look at the question when they're actually voting on it, those, that information would be very valuable to them. So I was just saying that that would be a better trade-off to, to catch those folks. So that's something that we might consider in the future. As Commissioner Giordano pointed out, most of the large counties have opted in. I know in San Francisco, from what we heard from Director Ernst, it creates a number of issues with that extra ballot card, including our sorting equipment and everything else. So it's, it's, it is a cost, a big cost to us, but we don't wanna, you know, save money at the expense of making sure that our voters are informed, so.
Thank you for clarifying.
All right, I just have a quick fun item. As most of you know, I spent three weeks in Cambridge at Harvard Kennedy School, attending their senior executives in state and local government program. And that was a fabulous program. It's, I attended with 51 other public officials from all over the nation and a few countries. We had three Australians and one person from Ireland. Very diverse group of officials. For example, the five of us from California included one of, and, and Jamie's colleagues in the city attorney's office, me as election commissioner. I was the only elections commissioner out of the 52 people. A librarian from Hayward, the elected DA from Monterey County, and the new police chief from the city of Mountain View. So very incredibly diverse cohort. And we studied everything from policy modeling to climate change, to state and local finance, community policing. It was incredible, very intense ruling program for three weeks, but I highly recommend it. There is a special fellowship that both Luisa Mora and I, from San Francisco, received that funds Bay Area, San Francisco Bay Area, public officials in particular. So happy to share that information with anyone else if you're interested. I did immediately get a question about whether I would support compulsory voting, because they have compulsory voting in, in Australia. And so that was like the first discussion that we had during introduction. So you can just imagine how amazing the conversations were. So anyway, just wanted to, to share that, and there were a lot of tools that we learned that I hope to put to use in my work on this commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Dai. Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
Is it okay for me to just address the change of date that we had? Because I was not here for the last 25 minutes of the last meeting. Can I just talk about that briefly?
Absolutely. I was also gonna talk about it in my report. Please go for it.
Okay, thank you. With deference to you, Commissioner Dai, I'm certainly happy that you had an educational and informative trip that we're all learning from. I just would like to go on record, as I did at the beginning of last meeting and at the previous meeting, or two meetings, where Commissioner Livalsi indicated she could not attend the previous meeting. When we have scheduled meetings at the beginning of the year, I feel very strongly that we need to commit to them and stay on the calendar. People, everybody has different commitments that come up. It is okay to miss a meeting, no matter how important your agenda item is. And as you could see tonight, Commissioner Parker isn't here, and I'm not sure if she would have been able to attend the meeting had it been at the regularly scheduled time. But this meeting tonight is coming up on the Fourth of July weekend, where many people are gone. It's not the most convenient. The exceptions that I would, support would be around the Christmas and Thanksgiving holiday, to move around that. But otherwise, we publish a calendar, and I think it's in the public's interest to adhere to that calendar and respect the public in that. I would just say. I would just say personally, I did leave the meeting a half hour early last week, last time, because I had a commitment the next day. I had moved a vacation that when I was appointed to this commission, I take my role seriously, and I paid a lot of money to move that vacation and make sure that I attended the meeting and did not ask this group to change the meeting date to accommodate me. So while I support what you just, your participation in the fellowship, I do not believe that this commission should support a policy where we are changing our meeting dates, because I don't believe it's in the best interest of the public. And after all, I don't believe the Board of Supervisors does that, so, for their meeting dates. And that would be a precedent that we would follow. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayden Crowley. Commissioners Livalsi and Bernhols want to give you an opportunity to provide any reports, should you have anything.
No.
Okay, I don't see any raise from Commissioner Bernhols. I just had a few updates, and then I will also provide yet another update on our tech issues or solves. So I wanted to give a couple of updates. I'll speak to the policy about moving meetings in a moment, but first, I wanted to just share that Secretary Davis and I have been going through some very old file cabinets for the Elections Commission that includes a lot of old meeting documents from the last 20-plus years. And so that is a process that we're going to be continuing to work on. There's a lot of interesting material in there, but I wanted to just let everyone know that we are going through those. If people have specific interests in certain materials, let us know. There is all kinds of stuff in there that we've only just begun to scratch the surface around. But hopefully, at some point, not necessarily this year, but maybe in a future budget cycle, we could propose trying to digitize some of those records. One of the things that, you know, I've mentioned as, in this role in the last year, is that I think providing the public with insight into the history of the commission and what we've done, what we've accomplished, also why we were established. I think there's a lot of value in providing more access to that information, some of which is in those documents. And so I just wanted folks to be aware that that is a project that is being currently worked on and may take some time, but for whomever may be the president in the next budget cycle, it's something I think we should continue to consider in terms of digitizing some of those records and getting them on our website. That's just kind of a brief update. The second update I wanted to talk about was around the policies, as I did receive some feedback. And I wanted to give some transparency with folks about how I, in the last, let's see, six months, have been approaching moving our meetings or requests to move meetings for the, just for general knowledge, everyone being on the same page, and also having a little bit of a discussion around it. So I echo Commissioner Hayden Crowley's sentiment that, you know, there are things in our personal lives, we all have very busy lives, and it's okay to miss meetings every once in a while. But the general process that I have followed is to restate some of that, which is, you know, it's okay to miss every once in a while, giving a heads up, it's important to be consistent for the public. Obviously, we do have an established meeting date at the third Wednesday of every month in the same room at the same time, that we do try and follow. But at the worst-case scenario, if folks feel strongly about participating in the meeting and want to consider moving the meeting, I have suggested that those folks who are requesting that ask, present it to the full body during the appropriate agenda item. And so that has been the way we have done it. I think there have been a couple of times where we haven't moved the meeting in the last six months. This past time, there was general consensus. I think we could evolve these policies, or this policy, rather. But I wanted to give folks, A, transparency into what that policy has been over the last six months for everyone, not just Commissioner Dai, and B, I welcome feedback, whether it's here or via email, about that policy, and we can continue to talk about it should that be of issue. So I will open that up for discussion in just a minute. The last quick report I wanted to provide, which is actually related, which is that we are going to have our regular meeting for July at our usual day, third Wednesday of the month in the same room. We are not having our August regular meeting. We are, we will be doing a retreat offsite, details to come on that. And then the one other big update that I have shared, that I'd like to share with everyone, is that we will be, around the holidays specifically, is that the November meeting will remain the same on Wednesday, November 15th, but the December meeting has been moved to Tuesday, December 12th, at 6:00 PM in Room 400. That will obviously be updated on the website, but we did want to get ahead of scheduling a meeting room for that week, given that folks may be wanting to travel for some of the observed holidays. Those are my updates. I do welcome discussion about the policy or any other questions I have, so I will open the floor to other commissioners for their feedback.
Yeah, I just want to say that Commissioner Parker was very apologetic, because she had originally said that she could make the state, and there was a last-minute, you know, trip, so she apologized for having to miss it. But originally, all seven of us could make it.
Okay, there are no further comments. I think what we'll do as it pertains to the policy is, should this come up again, let's just, or if someone reaches out with this request and it becomes a full conversation of the body again, let's revisit this policy if it should be an issue. I do echo Commissioner Hayden Crowley's sentiment that consistency with the public is imperative, so. Vice President Giordano.
Yeah, thank you for your report, President Stone. I just had a question about the, you know, the old papers you're going through.
Yeah.
Are they, how far back do they go? It's the oldest one to the first year, or is it more recent than that?
This is President Stone, they're quite old, from almost the establishment of the body. There are quite a few documents that I actually thought you in particular might be interested in, so.
Okay, great. Also, just another point of information is, I think at one point in our history, shortly after I joined, I think the commission secretary sent a number of documents to the city's archive, so there could even be more, but I don't know how one can obtain those as well, but something else to think about.
Thank you, Vice President Giordano. I appreciate that, and we'll look into that. Commissioner Livalsi.
This is Commissioner Livalsi, I have a question. When will there be access to those documents, do you think?
This is President Stone, you can have access to those documents whenever you'd like.
Okay, so if I want to look at something, I can just reach out to you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, no problem.
Should be fun.
With that, we'll move to public comment with a brief note, an update on our ever-ending, never-ending, rather, struggle with tech. But there are a couple of updates. One is that the call-in number we can confirm does work, so just a quick reminder that for folks who have decided to make, join and want to make public comment over audio, you can use the appropriate call-in information listed on the agenda and on the website and press star three to raise your hand, and Secretary Davis will advance you. Additionally, if you do attempt to join as a panelist, with that solve that we presented earlier in the meeting, you may raise your hand as well, and that way, so for folks who are, were not at the beginning of the meeting when we were facing these issues, you will have to join as a panelist. The information to do so is listed on our website, so you'll have to leave the webinar and rejoin as a panelist. You will be able to raise your hand as a panelist, and then Secretary Davis will advance you and call on you when it's your turn. But thank you all so much for your patience. I really, I really appreciate that, including the DCAs, Secretary Davis, Vice President Giordano, and the commissioners, members of the public, everyone for your patience. I recognize, not ideal. We're gonna move to public comment on Agenda Item Number Five. Commissioners' reports.
I do not see any public comment on Sheet Number Five.
Okay, thank you, Secretary Davis. And for the purposes of access, we're gonna do this one more time. We're gonna move back to Agenda Item Number Two, now that we have confirmed that our two different workarounds do in fact work. Let's move back to Agenda Item Number Two, General Public Comment on Any Issue Within the Elections Commission's General Jurisdiction That Is Not Covered by Another Item on This Agenda. Secretary Davis, are there any public commentaries for Agenda Item Number Two?
No, and if you call in as a panelist and raise your hand, I may unmute you before we recognize you, so please stay on the line. No comments.
Great. For the last time, we will close out Agenda Item Number Two and move to Agenda Item Number Six, Fair, Independent, and Effective Redistricting for Community Engagement Committee Updates. Discussion and Possible Action on Updates from the May and June convenings of the Commission's Temporary Fair, Independent, and Effective Redistricting for Community Engagement Committee. And with that, I will hand it to, over to Commissioner Livalsi and Commissioner Dai to provide updates on the meeting from earlier this week.
Okay, so the Fierce Committee met twice on May 31st and again on just this last Monday, for about five hours total. We did have technical issues as well for both meetings, since we didn't have, we didn't have any staff and we were our own tech support. I just wanted to note, in the May meeting, we had issues with the audio, room audio being heard on the WebEx. So we lost about 15 minutes of the initial audio on the recording, but fortunately, Commissioner Parker figured out how to fix it before the main agenda item, so most of the meeting is there. That recording has been posted. In Monday's meeting, there was an issue with folks on the phone not being able to raise their hands, or at least we weren't able to see them. So we found out after the meeting that several members of the public had wanted to comment, as well as, including some panelists from our first meeting, so apologies to them all. I'm not sure how we would have resolved the call-in thing. We were able to take a lot of public comment in the room, and I don't think we had any commenters via WebEx. I thought I would give Commissioner Livalsi a chance to make some initial comments about both of our meetings and thoughts, and then I'm happy to do some more.
Thank you, Commissioner Dai, this is Commissioner Livalsi. The meeting on Monday, my thoughts and reflections are mainly that this is something that I think would allow our redistricting process to be something that would, could be less strenuous, less harmful to those who participate, listening to the members of the public who were on past commissions and their feeling of, feeling that they could not do what they wanted to do, that they felt some pressure. I want to be clear, not all of the participants who spoke to us on Monday had that feeling. There was a lot to process. There were very engaged members of the public who had thoughts and impressions, and I will say that it's always important and imperative to hear from the public. I was somewhat surprised at some of the personal attacks, but as commissioners, we're aware that that's something that may occur. I left the meeting with a sense that we should pause a bit and see what the current legislation, how that will play out. But I do feel that removing political influence from the redistricting process is the best way to ensure particularly that certain marginalized groups in the cities, in the city whose population are dwindling, are represented. And so how we do that is the question, a concern I had, and that came up, and there was a discussion with several of the panelists about the vetting authority for applications, if we were to go through a process that allowed people to apply as members of their supervisory district. And that's probably where it would be the most difficult. Who is the authority in the city that the community and people in the city would trust to vet those applications? I know that the city attorney's office has said that it would be the San Francisco Ethics Commission, but I'm not sure that there's a large trust in that organization as well. So I left the meeting with a lot of questions and concerns as to how we can have a redistricting that is removed from political influence, but that also is fair and representative, especially of smaller communities in the city. And I'm specifically thinking about the African-American and Latino communities.
Thank you, Commissioner Livalsi. I just had a quick point of clarification. When you said something less strenuous and also vetting those applications, are you referring to the state legislation or just redistricting in general? Just so I know, I'm following what you're tracking with you.
So I'm thinking in terms of we were to, if the Board of Supervisors was to write legislation, it would be that we would have a vetting agency for members of the public to apply. And so what agency would the people of San Francisco have confidence in?
So as opposed to how it currently stands?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Commissioner Dai.
Yeah, so let me give you a brief overview. The May 31st meeting, since it was our first meeting, I gave a brief history of how the redistricting initiative came to be, that it was a response to protests in front of City Hall in March of 2022, and that the Elections Commission had been studying these possible reforms for over a year. The featured at that first meeting was a very diverse panel of good government experts plus a former Redistricting Task Force member. So you'll remember, these were folks from Common Cause, the League of Women Voters of San Francisco, Asian Americans Advancing Justice, Asian Law Caucus, and then Chima Hernandez-Gill, who was on our most recent Redistricting Task Force to kind of provide the local reality check of what actually happened in the last process. And the, the meeting was designed to help us answer the question of how well AB 1248, which is pending in the Senate right now, and AB 764, also pending in the Senate, would suit San Francisco if it passed and we struck all the language in the charter referencing the Redistricting Task Force, or that we use it as a basis for a charter amendment? And then the second question we were trying to answer is, what happens if that legislation, the state legislation doesn't pass, where does that leave us? So the answer to the first question was that there was a pretty good consensus among our good government experts that AB 1248 would implement almost all of the key reforms that were contained in the summary of redistricting reform recommendations that we had studied over six months or the latter half of 2022. And in fact, seatsake offered from the Asian Law Caucus said that it would probably get us 95% of the way. said that it would probably get us 95% of the way. Would it be helpful if I do a quick overview of, of what 1248 would actually cover? Because I went through it with a kind of a fine tooth comb.
Is that question direct, is President Stone, is that question directed at me?
It's directed at the, at the full commission. Would it be helpful for me to quickly review what the provisions are for AB 1248 and AB 764? Or have you all read it?
Vice President Giordano?
Well, I just have a question. Are you, are we moving into the discussion portion of the item? Or are you still reporting on the?
I'm still reporting on it. I, I did this overview for the public because I figured not everyone read these bills in detail. So I did a quick summary of what the key reforms are. And I'm just wondering if it would be beneficial for the commission as well? Or if you feel confident that you've read everything, then I'll just move on.
I'm, I'm comfortable either way, whatever other people want to do.
What's your name, Bill?
I'm the same. I'm comfortable either way. I mean, I, I've read this a lot.
Okay.
But it doesn't mean that I remember it.
All right, let me, let me.
Let me be candid.
All right, that's why I thought it might be helpful to just do a quick review. It won't take very long. So 1248 is basically about creating independent redistricting commissions. As you know, San Francisco has one. But because of a clause at the beginning of the bill, which states that political appointment of Commissioners has been found to create potential conflicts of interest and opportunity for corruption of the redistricting process, San Francisco's redistrict task force would not qualify under this bill, and we would be forced to create a different one. It requires that all these, this applies to all cities, counties, including charter cities. It requires reasonable funding and staffing for the, for the commission, an open and competitive selection process from a large representative pool whose number of applicants and demographics must be made public. So one of the things that we had talked about early, early in our redistricting initiative process is the fact that we actually don't even know how many people applied. You know, it's, it was a black box in terms of how many applicants applied through the mayor. The only kind of open, well, we know that there were eight people who applied to the Board of Supervisors and 35 that applied through our commission. And there was a large overlap between those, so, and demographics were not reported. There are minimum qualifications to serve, including residency, a history of civic engagement, the ability to be impartial analytical skills, and appreciation of San Francisco's diverse demographics and geography. We have no qualifications currently for our redistricting task force members. There are pre-jury and post-service requirements, because you don't want people running for the districts that they just drew. There are conflict of interest checks, including family members. So you can't have been a candidate for office, a lobbyist, a major donor, anything that would conflict you out from being able to draw fair and representative districts. There is a vetting agency that helps select people from this, you know, large pool of applicants. And we've heard from the, our DCAs that the law would say for San Francisco, that would be the Ethics Commission. And so there was some discussion about whether that would be right for San Francisco. If we don't create our own separate charter amendment, a default structure would be put in place. And this default structure is based totally off of the California Citizens Redistricting Commission, which has operated twice successfully now. 14 members plus two alternates. So that is the new addition, which is a big improvement. Eight randomly selected from the 40 most qualified applicants that the vetting agency would choose based on that standard criteria. And those eight would have to come from all different districts. And then those eight would select the final six to balance out diversity. So remember, we had the discussion about random selection versus, versus actual selection. And this is something that I had been very concerned about. And this kind of addresses my concern that we have too many districts. And if everybody was, you know, randomly selected, we might not have a very diverse commission at all. And then there's also stipulation that they can't be from all the same party. There's a ban on ex parte communication, so there's no political interference. You're not allowed to talk. Elected officials are not allowed to speak with commission members outside of a public meeting. There's a minimum of 250 days before the deadline when the task force has to be constituted. One of the issues in this last cycle is that the redistricting task force was constituted pretty late and didn't have enough time to, to, to do the public input hearings and draw the maps. That was something that our good government panel was a little bit concerned about. They said that even though that's a minimum, that San Francisco is a big, complex city and probably needs to start a year in advance. So they were concerned that, that there would be, you know, that people would automatically default to the minimum and not, not take more time. And they felt that San Francisco should take more time, that, and not have a rush process. It puts in a super majority of nine who have to approve the map, so, to build consensus. And there's actually a removal process that the, the task force would monitor themselves. So people wouldn't be protesting in front of City Hall and coming in front of the Elections Commission to, to have us remove them. So that's 1248. So if you look at all these things, it hits almost all of the elements that we had talked about before. And AB 764 strengthens the Fair Maps Act, which we, as a city, were exempt from because we were a charter city. We would no longer be exempt from, from that act if this passes. This is designed to strengthen the Fair Maps Act. It requires a published, published education and outreach plan, mapping tools, and a public website, so that members of the public can follow the redistricting process. It puts in ranked mapping criteria, exactly like the state. It requires increased transparency, a five-day notice for meetings, seven days for the final map. And it requires publishing a final report, which each of our redistricting task forces have done, which was not required, but they have done it. However, the, this stipulates that the report must identify and explain why each neighborhood and/or community of interest was split. And that was not done in, in any of the reports that I've seen. It supports that, it requires that we support hybrid meetings, accessibility, weekend, our evening meetings for more accessibility to the public. And it requires a minimum of two public hearings before a draft map and seven afterwards. And I think most of our redistricting task force have actually done more than that, but this is setting the minimum bar across the state. And finally, something that was really missing when people came to us is it provides recourse if the commission fails to meet the deadline. So our redistricting task force missed the deadline. They were not alone. So in this case, it stipulates that it would punt to secure, superior court. So in other words, if the task force fails, the Superior Court would draw the lines instead. And they would, they could hire a special master to, to do that. Both bills indicate that good local redistricting is a matter of state concern. So that's why charter cities would no longer be exempt. We did get clarification that San Francisco Unified would not be subject to this because they do not have district elections. So that's a stipulation. So that's a brief summary of the two bills, and that is what all of the good government experts said would get a 70, sorry, 95% of all of the reforms that we've been discussing for the past year. Mr. Gill, who served on the past redistricting task force, noted that, he said alternates were crucial to have backup plan. We had some discussion about stipends and what would be a reasonable stipend. For example, the Long Beach stipend was, I think, $200 per meeting. And then there was no consensus on whether the Ethics Commission was the right vetting body for San Francisco. And so that's something that we would want to ask the Board of Supervisors, should they draft legislation to get input from the public on. The other thing was that, the other question was, what happens if, if 1248 doesn't pass? And we had struck all the language from the charter. And Jen Say from the League of Women Voters had, had opined that it might still be an improvement because San Francisco would still fall under the Fair Maps Act, which we didn't fall under before, which has the rank criteria, all the transparency and other key reforms. So she thought it would still be better for San Francisco, although subsequently, we did get clarification from our DCAs that if San Francisco did not pass its own, you know, charter amendment and put its own independent redistricting commission in, then it means, and 1248 did not pass, forcing that default commission, it would mean the Board of Supervisors would be the redistricting body, although they would have to follow the rank criteria, the transparency, the community engagement rules, all of the Fair Maps Act. However, they would still be drawing the lines, which, my personal opinion is that probably would not be acceptable, since we've had an independent redistricting body for over 20 years. On the Monday's meeting was a very challenging meeting. There were, as you know, we had a lot of form letters that we received prior to the meeting. We had a lot of people in person who gave public comment. But we did have a very rich discussion, because we had, in response to comments from the first meeting, we had sent out a notice to all former redistricting task force members. There had been concerns expressed in the, in the letters we received before the first meeting that we had only talked to one redistricting task force member, which, as you know, all of you know, is not true, since we had a panel last fall. We did only have one on the 31st, but we had spoken to five total redistricting task force members previously. But we thought it would be a good idea. And part of the reason we didn't take action after the meeting on the 31st is that we thought it would be useful to get input from, from other redistricting task force members we had not heard from. So I went ahead and gathered all the emails I could. Keep in mind, none of them have SF.gov emails anymore. So we got everyone who served this past cycle, almost all of the folks who served in 2011, and the chair of the very first redistricting task force. And we were fortunate enough to have three of them come to our meeting. And then as a complete bonus, I also got Oakland-based Russell Yi, who's on the 2020 California Citizens Redistricting Commission and one of the rotating chairs, to also participate via WebEx. I know that many of us have said, hey, why don't we hear from the California Commission? And it's because they were drawing 176 districts. They didn't have time to come talk to us. But now they're writing their own final recommendations report. And I was able to get Mr. Yi to join us from Sacramento. He was at a CRC meeting, but he took a break and joined us for an hour on a WebEx. And I asked him how they got a unanimous vote on 176 districts with a multi-partisan body, a census delay, and a global pandemic. And he cited three things that helped them be successful. He said, one, the impartiality of all the Commissioners, which is one of the criteria. The fact that they represented all of California and not just their hometowns. The other thing was the rank criteria, which would also be, you know, and has been put in place for every other jurisdiction except for charter cities. And then he said adequate staffing. And if those of you who remembered, we had testimony from the city clerk that staffing was a real issue for the redistricting task force, that they had no control over their own budget or staff. And he actually mentioned that in his hometown of Oakland, that their independent redistricting commission was three to four months late because of inadequate staffing. He said they had like a halftime person like us, like the Elections Commission, and that's why they were so far behind. He also endorsed the use of alternates, which of course they don't have at the state level. And he spent some time in response to a question from Commissioner Parker discussing how well the super majority requirement worked for them, that it really worked to build consensus for them. And then we switched over to our three redistricting task force members. We were fortunate to have in person, from the most recent task force, Jeremy Lee, who was appointed by the Board of Supervisors, Arnold Townsend, who was chair and appointed by the mayor, and then virtually on WebEx, the chair of the 2011 redistricting task force, Eric McDonald, who was also appointed by the Board of Supervisors. Unfortunately, Gwen Craig, who was chair of the very first redistricting task force, had a home emergency and texted me like five minutes before the meeting saying she wasn't going to be able to make it. But we do have our own record from the September 2022 meeting. And, you know, the, the testimony was really disturbing in many ways. We heard from their mouths stories of, of the pressure that they were under. Mr. Lee talked about how it amplified, you know, that they not only were getting pressure from their appointing authorities, but because everyone from that small group of people were pretty much, you know, political, politically connected. And so they all had connections to people, so they were getting pressure from all kinds of individuals. Reverend Townsend talked about the, the focus was drawing safe districts, which is shocking, as I, I said, that's basically the definition of gerrymandering. But that was the kind of pressure that this, this body was under. Mr. Lee shared at the end, which was particularly poignant, that, that he has been on two different antidepressants since this experience because of the trauma of being, of serving. And I found that disturbing as well. So I would say that, and then we had a, a little bit of contrast from Mr. McDonald, who had a unanimous vote and a relatively uncontious process. But basically, all three of them talked about the importance of, of kind of minimizing political influence. So strong support for that from all of them, strong support for stipend, which is a question that had come up, that that would make it more equitable. And trying to think what else to highlight from it. But yeah. They were undecided on the proper vetting authority. That was something, we asked them, they're all San Franciscans, like what do they, what do they think the right vetting authority should be? And then the question they asked is, how is the Elections Commission selected? Right? So they, they said that, you know, we need to take into consideration whether there's enough, you know, whether there's a, the Elections Commission, the Ethics Commission has political influence in this election and would that taint their vetting ability to vet and be trusted by the public? And so that was the question that was asked. Who appoints them was the question that was asked. Reverend Townsend had some really poignant comments about that he was threatened for bringing up the African-American community. Yeah, when he tried to represent them as part of this process. There was discussion of a pretty constant faction that there were five-four votes on multiple things. And that it seemed to be that certain, maybe not all, but certain members of the redistricting task force had come in there with an agenda. We did discuss also a little bit about the random selection process. But yeah, it's, we're working on getting the recording up. I actually recommend that everybody listen to it. It was very interesting. We had a lot of public comment afterwards. And basically after that, after hearing the public comment, it was interesting, many of the public commenters said that they, they had, you know, different ideas after hearing the panel, which I thought was positive. The discussion that we had as a committee afterwards was, you know, whether we were ready to take action on it. And I think I'm, I'm channeling Commissioner Parker here, that she said it was important that we, you know, have the community's trust as we move through this process. And that, given that, you know, that this legislation is still pending at the state level, that it might be useful to take a pause and see, you know, where that goes. So, so that's kind of where we are. So, so that's kind of where we are right now. I do agree that while we have been on this journey for a year, it's very clear that the members of the public who certainly showed up at our meeting have not been. And also, since we switched over to this new website, it's hard to find the archived footage of, of all of the expert testimony that we've had. So I think it's useful to try to bring people along. I mean, I think there's genuine interest in hearing from all the expert testimony that we, that we have been, you know, listening to for a year. And, you know, it's all there on our website if you can find it in the archive. And so we, I think it's incumbent upon us to make that more available so that the public can, can, you know, learn why we are proposing these reforms. And that it's not because we want any particular outcome that these are structural and process recommendations to remove political influence and to insulate the public servants who have, you know, for the last three cycles have volunteered to, to do this very important job of trying to figure out what, you know, what districts would provide the best representation for all San Franciscans. And the fact that, you know, we are basically causing mental illness for those who serve is, is really, I think, a big concern. And something that we heard, not only from Mr. McDonald, who chaired the relatively smooth 2011 redistricting task force, we also heard from Mr. Lee, Young Lee, who also served with him, that the reason they were successful is that they were left alone, men allowed to do their job. So, so that's my summary, which I will try to write up in minutes at some point.
Thank you, Commissioner Di. Does anyone have any follow-up questions or comments? Or Commissioners, Levolsky or Commissioner Di? Vice President Giordano.
Yes, so just to confirm, there, there was no action taken at either of the meetings?
Well, the action was that we decided that we needed to take a pause and we want to monitor the, the status of the state legislation. I will say that, that it has been amended a couple of times and the amendments have all been good. So we moved from, one of my biggest concerns was that there was random, it had previously stipulated random selection for all districts, which with a 14-member commission would have left only three at-large seats, which might have resulted in a not very diverse commission. And so they fixed that. So.
Can I just add to your question and answer your question?
Commissioner Levolsky?
Yes, the, about taking action. One of the other reasons to pause at this time is to also allow the public to get more information and to review and see what information the committee actually brought to the public. That was also the other reason for pausing.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Levolsky. Vice President Giordano.
Yes, so are there, so I know you said you wanted to wait and see what happens with the legislation, but are you planning on proposing that the commission encourage the city to take a position on either of the bills or, or not? Or is that undecided?
Well, I think part of the reason is that it's being amended. So the bill is actually literally changing as we speak. And so, you know, I think that the committee was hesitant to, first of all, we didn't, we didn't explicitly have a discussion about the letter because we were mostly focused on, on getting this testimony from the panelists. That is something we could take up at a future committee meeting. And we also wanted to open it up to the rest of the commission to suggest to us other, you know, other topics that you might want us to explore. For example, like I said, we were, it was just lucky that Mr. Lee, Mr. Yee from the 2020 CRC happened to reach out to me because he's one of the final recommendations report authors. And he wanted to include some information about the 2010 CRC. And so he happened to reach out to me and I said, hey, would you be able to show up at a meeting next Monday? Because that is the first time we've had a chance to hear from this last statewide commission, which faced all the same challenges as our redistricting task force with the census delay and the global pandemic and all that. So, for example, would it be useful to hear from CRC member Sarah Sedwani, who is very involved with the reform efforts with the city of Los Angeles? In fact, they just published a report. As you recall, if it were not for Los Angeles, San Francisco would be the poster child for what went wrong in the redistricting process. So she unfortunately wasn't available. I had asked her to be available and she wasn't available on Monday, just turned out. But might be open to addressing the committee if there are additional questions that we would want to ask, like what we could learn from the state process this past time. I'm just throwing that out as, as an idea. We could spend another committee minute, meeting debating the merits of, of, of moving on that letter. Like I said, we actually didn't have time to actually explicitly discuss the letter and whether to recommend to the commission on whether to take action on it.
Point of order, Vice President Giordano. I don't know if you have like a list of questions. Do you want to run through the list of questions? And then we can also hand it back to the Commissioners Levolsky and Di so that they can, just for the purposes of efficiency. So we're not doing the like bouncing back and forth.
Yeah, I, I do have a list of questions, I think maybe four.
Okay, if you don't mind, just for the purposes of moving the meeting along.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, so one question is, what is the timeframe for taking a position on the state legislation? Related to that, you mentioned that the legislation is undergoing a lot of amendments. And my, my point is that, the point I want to make is that you can also be supportive of the broad strokes of legislation, even if you don't know the exact details. My third question is, when you say taking a pause, just to clarify, do you mean that the committee is going to stop meeting for a while? Or do you just mean that you're going to take a pause in taking any positions, but the committee would continue to meet? And then my next question was, you know, I, I've also been receiving the emails. I'm counting, I think between 150 and 200. There might be some duplicates in there. And one of the concerns was that, saying that seven of the nine last task force members were not involved in the discussion. So I just wanted to know, like, how many of the nine have you reached out to? And how many of those have replied? And also, how many of them are supportive of the idea of, of looking into these issues? And I think those are, those are all my questions.
Thank you, Vice President Giordano, for doing it that way. Commissioner Di.
Yes, thank you. So, so the timeframe, you know, we're going to figure out at our next meeting. So, so, you know, like I said, I think part of taking a pause is making sure that all of the educational material that, that we have reviewed as a commission, that is on our archived website, is something that we can make more easily accessible to the public. I know that we, you know, we had talked about putting up a page that's focused on this. And that's under, you know, behind a long list of other projects for the website. So it might be as simple as providing the links directly in the project plan, which is something I was hoping to do before this meeting, but didn't have time to. But I, I will try to do that sooner rather than later so we can post that. And that way, people can directly go to the link instead of having to navigate through our archived website and figure that out. And that the people have an idea of, of all the different groups that we consulted and what the topics are. Yes, we plan to keep meeting. We're just trying to figure out what the agenda will be for the next meeting. So that's why we wanted to get input from you guys. I, I do agree that it's possible to be supportive of the general intent of a bill and not worry about the specifics. And in fact, reiterated that that is our intention as a commission, since we do not draft legislation, is just to indicate that, you know, what reforms we're supportive of and the details are, are things to be worked out with the city attorney and our legislative champions. And then finally, as I mentioned earlier, I got the emails for all of the past, the 2021 redistricting task force members. So all of them received it. I also had pointed out to Mr. Casel Lee, who was one of our appointees, who attended our first meeting, that I had actually posted as a public comment to the redistricting task force that we were starting this process and had invited them to participate. And so they had all received it in May of 2022 to admittedly, there's SF.gov emails, which they may or may not have actually checked. And it was also posted as a public comment on their final report. So they, they got that invitation over a year ago. Then I reached out to them early this, after our May 31st meeting and invited them, as well as members of the previous two redistricting task force to attend and testify. I received a response from, not counting the older redistricting, from the current redistricting task force members. Obviously, Mr. Jeremy Lee attended, along with the chair and Reverend Arnold Townsend. Mr. Casel Lee, one of our appointees, was unable to attend, but he did respond to me. Mr. Raynell Cooper, from who we've heard before, another one of our appointees, said he would provide written comment. I also invited Mr. Lee to, but he didn't respond to that. We heard from our other appointee, Ms. Tidka Reiner. And she wrote a note, but said she wasn't able to attend and wouldn't have time to review the legislation. And trying to think if there are any other. Those are the ones that I can think of off the top of my head. I think there were one or two others who responded that they just couldn't attend. And then a few others didn't respond. And obviously, Mr. Gill, who had attended our first meeting. So that's most of them, actually.
Okay, thank you. Also, you could add as well if you want to.
She answered the questions.
Thank you, Vice President Giordano, and thank you, Commissioner Di. I'll open it up for Commissioner Bernhols. Commissioner Hayden Crowley, do you have any comments, questions?
Or suggestions for our direction?
I have a couple of comments. I don't see Commissioner Bernhols' hand, but standing by in case she does have a comment. So thank you, Commissioners Levolsky and Commissioner Di for the robust update. The, I don't have any, you know, in response to your question about additional topics to explore, I'm just running through my notes here. I don't have any additional asks. You know, I think the commission has learned a tremendous amount over the last year through this initiative, through the folks who've come and spoken to us. And I, you know, offline, I had, we had spoken about this, Commissioner Di. I am glad to hear your idea about including the links in the project plan. Because I do think, while it's also great as, in reference to Vice President Giordano's Commissioners Report about the archived pages, getting some cleanup from digital services, I think there will be value in updating the project plan with the links and the names and the dates of folks who have spoken at the commission. So people can easily access those. And I really appreciate you putting in the effort to do that because I think that's a good transparency measure. The other additional piece that I just wanted to draw folks' attention to is the memo from the DCAs from the last meeting, May 17th, Agenda Item Number, I wrote it down, seven, from the May 17th meeting. It's a memo from April 23rd, also talking about the state legislation, not about updating the Fair Maps Act, but talking about local redistricting, which also provides some of a summary of the legislation. The other additional piece I wanted to mention is that I know Commissioner Parker wasn't able to join us today, but I am looking forward to hearing her feedback and hearing her perspective. I really appreciate both Commissioners Levolsky and Commissioner Di's thoughts. Definitely want to make sure I have the opportunity to hear hers. And then one of the last comments I have is just my feelings that I, I do think that there's value in seeing what happens with state legislation, understanding kind of what will happen. I know there have been measures like this in the past that have been vetoed by, for a variety of reasons. And so I think there, it may be value in kind of waiting to see what does happen. And that doesn't so much mean you can't meet. It's more just, I think we've done a lot. And namely, Commissioner Di, you've done a tremendous amount to educate. I think it'll be great to give folks the ability to see all of the education that you've provided. And so giving it time to see what happens at the state level and, and then kind of regrouping as the committee is authorized to do, to see then kind of how to move forward. That's personally where I stand on the matter. I recognize we are missing one committee member whose voice, you know, I'd love to hear and perhaps, you know, she can provide some additional thoughts in writing and also in the, in the July meeting. So other than that, I don't have any additional thoughts. I, I do echo, as I've kind of woven into my comments, I echo the need for rebuilding, restoring public trust. I think that's not just about redistricting. I think that's about, just in general, kind of what this body is for, that we were created by the voters, that we are a nonpartisan body. And I think when we're trying to tackle something as, as, for lack of a better word, contested, as redistricting and as intense and tumultuous as it was for all different sides, which you've laid out in your report, I think there's value in the folks who are delivering, you know, some suggestions or reform, being able to have a level of credibility with the public. So I think we're all kind of on the same page and echoing that, but it might be valuable to think about that as, as you prepare for the next committee meeting. So those are my comments. And I will leave it to anyone else for any follow-ups. Okay. I don't see a hand raised by Commissioner Bernhols. If there are no other comments, let's move to public comment. We're going to start with, if that's okay. So we're moving to public comment on Agenda Item Number Six, Fair, Independent and Effective Redistricting for Community Engagement Committee Updates. First, we will begin with public comment in the room. And then, once that is completed, we'll move to participants who have joined remotely. And then Secretary Davis, will you also ensure that the public commenters know when they're?
Right.
When they have 30 seconds?
If you're ready, I will sit you for three minutes and then let you know at 30 seconds.
Ellen Buradell, District Eight, I'm representing ACTIVA8SF. And that's A-C-T-I-V-A-S-F dot com. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you. I'm reading from a page from the 2022 SF Redistricting Task Force Record. It's a member statement signed by Hernandez Pearson Lee. And it's page 60, and the first sentence and the conclusion, it says, "Redistricting is a fundamentally political process." And this really addresses the comments I heard from both of you during Monday's meeting and several of you as well. "It's fundamentally a political process." And this is what they wrote. And I looked at the word fundamental, we, we know what words mean, but sometimes we need to look up, right? And see exactly what it means. "It's used to make a dramatic statement, well, basic." So.
We'll make sure your time is restored. Just bear with us for a moment. Okay, please continue.
And so that's what that word means. So anyway, that's how important this line is here. Now, if this is true, what people do, if this is true, what people do we not want to participate in this fundamentally political process? That's an. That's an important question, right? If it's true, and I believe it's true, it's very fundamentally a political process. So the answer clearly, though, is people who are fundamentally non-political, right? Fundamentally non-political people should be part of the process. So who did the, this board appoint, this appointing body? They appointed a public utilities lawyer, they appointed a transportation planner, they appointed a retired technology consultant from CPEO. All very non-political. Who did the mayor appoint? A data scientist, a retool, a financial asset amateur, and a board member, a public area youth, and finally, a rep, again, an NAACP board member. Again, so you have six participants there, all very non-political. But then, we go to the board supervisors, and the lead of women voters, how they describe the first member, it's currently, she's currently a political organizer, political organizer. Okay, that's who the board appointed.
30 seconds.
Secondly, who did they appoint? It's the board supervisors, exactly the director of the babies, who are appointed, community advocates, and they are a political organizing group seeking environmental justice that has been out for 25 years. The last one is an employee of the Chinatown Community Development Center, highly fundamentally politically active, nonprofit, permanent supportive housing provider. That's what our board of supervisors did. We had two completely different bodies. We had six members who were just regular people, and we had three that were highly political.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, and apologies for the technical issues during your comment, and we appreciate If you wouldn't mind also projecting into the microphone, that would be great.
... the redistricting activists that was there last night's meeting. I'm shocked, I mean, as the lies, Mr. President, Jason, we die about severity, parity, committee. Number one, after a district meeting, the task force, that was all softened, right? And none of them wanted to put it, she's on the voting table, she sent to the first batch email, there's SFW emails, it's unclear if there were 10 million emails, just unclear if they wanted to put it in this, actually, the email inbox was still active, and it was only after what she referred to as a kind of foreign emails, but actually not foreign emails, many of them are people personally, not for their own, calling her out that she didn't include the other task board members, that she then made a real attempt to reach the other task board members. She was able to get two, that's true. One of them was the chair of the redistricting task force.
By the way, oh, jeez, should I start over, or?
That's okay.
Okay. By the way, is an elderly black person, and she just grossly misrepresented everything he said. I mean, please go home and watch the recording, please. But to just highlight a couple things, she says that he admits to gerrymandering, that she said that the focus was on creating safe districts. He was referring to public commenters wanting to create safe districts for incumbents. And she's, she completely glosses over the fact that Arnold actually calls Lee out when he talks about having an agenda. He talks about having a political agenda. Townsend says to Lee that night, and I quote, "I take offense to that, just because you couldn't convince me to vote your way, doesn't mean that I had an agenda." So, I mean, you know, I'm sorry, Commissioner Le Volce, for a personal attack, but I mean, this is the definition of racism. I mean, this guy's not here to defend himself. His comments were predominantly about his community, and you're grossly misrepresenting what he's saying, just like you tried to get this guy fired for being a straight white guy, and do you guys remember last year when she tried to kick three redistricting task force members off the task force for no legal reason? She had some fake person come from the ACLU, fake person come from, I mean, Jesus Christ. What, this cannot be a fair, independent, whatever, unless, Cindy, you got to resign. You got to resign, I'm sorry.
Time has expired. Thank you.
We actually have people online. Let me unmute the first caller who has a number starting with 847. I'm trying to unmute you. I'm going to go to, okay, there.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. I'm going to give you three minutes.
Apologies for that. Hi, this is a former redistricting task force member, Matthew Capilla, from the 2021 to 2022 task force. I was not planning on calling in tonight, but I could not contain myself after hearing the outright lies from Commissioner Dai tonight. She completely, completely forgot to mention the email that I responded to her, that she acknowledged that had been received. And I'll read that to you all right now. Hello, hello, Elections Commission. I'd like to first respond and say that the redistricting task force concluded in May 2022, so none of us were checking our government emails. I certainly never received any communication that Commissioner Dai claimed to have sent us. First off, I'd like to express my disappointment that we've been reached out to so late in the process. In the history of your website, you have been conducting hearings for about a year on this subject, and this is certainly the first on hearing of any of this. Furthermore, I am beyond confused as to why a local unelected body of Elections Commissioners is looking into drafting a charter amendment based on state legislation that has not passed. For one, the Elections Commission is not a legislative body. There's nothing in the Elections Commission's mandate that gives you authority to draft a charter amendment. In fact, from your own meeting documents, the Commission itself admits that it cannot take a position on a measure once it's on the ballot, yet the Commission is actively looking to shape that measure itself? No sane person could say that is an appropriate way to craft a charter amendment. Additionally, we have no idea how the legislation in Sacramento will pan out. The timeline assumes that the legislation passed this year, but that is no guarantee. In fact, the government knew some vetoed similar legislation in 2019. It seems premature to act when we have no idea what the state of California will require of us. But most importantly, over the past year, the Elections Commission has proven itself incapable of making good decisions for the city and county of San Francisco. From the way the Commission embarrassed her city with the paneling of nationally renowned Elections Director John Arntz, to the entire lack of outreach to previous task force members like myself, to the Elections Commission's own inappropriate interference in the most recent redistricting process, it's clear that the Elections Commission has no business weighing in on the process of redistricting. You are not a legislative body. Please focus on what your mandate is, approving plans for the conduction of elections. Thank you.
Okay, Gentee, I'm trying to unmute you here.
Thank you.
There we go. Are, yes, we can hear you. I'll give you three minutes. You're ready to start.
Thanks. Hi, this is Sensei with the Legal Women Voters of San Francisco. Thank you to the Elections Commission's Fair, Independent, and Effective Redistricting for Community Engagement Committee for their meetings, and the invited speakers for their discussion on redistricting reform, and the members of the public for showing up. Redistricting is a priority for the legal woman voters, and we support continuing to process our redistricting reform and all the work the Elections Commission has done. Reform takes time, and we need to act before people forget about redistricting. We can't wait nine years or eight, we should not wait. For independent redistricting commission, for independent redistricting commissions like California and Oakland, they started their selection process for commissioners before the census. They started in 2019. And for the California Citizens Redistricting Commission, they are still working on their final report and their fifth draft, posted this month. One of their recommendations is to start this elections process and the work of the CRC four to six months earlier, so that would be like, what, in 2018? Our charter did not let us start redistricting in San Francisco until the end of 2021. Under our charter, we can't start the redistricting process until the census is published, and not in compliance with the federal and state laws. Our city supervisors who serve in 2024 will not be impacted by redistricting reform, because they will be termed out by the time reform takes effect. The longer we delay the reform, the likely the chances city supervisors will have vested interests in the reform outcome. And having a vested interest in redistricting outcome is the kind of thing that leads to gerrymandering. Also, about my previous charter suggestion, if I can refine my suggestion, I think if we delete the first two paragraphs of the charter sections around redistricting, we would then fall under AB 849, that was passed in 2019, which was the Fair Maps Act. Like, we would fall under the criteria, because paragraph one is a section about how San Francisco can start redistricting process only after the census, and paragraph two is about the criteria itself in the charter. And paragraph three, that's the part about the selection of the task force. So I think if we delete the first two paragraphs of the section in the charter around redistricting, we can be FMA compliant, but we would still have a political appointed task force, so please double check with the DCA. Again, it is not too early to work on reform, to time it back now. Thank you.
Secretary Davis, before we move to the next public commenter, I'm hearing that it's kind of difficult to hear. I don't know if there, if there's a way for us to mute while public commenters are speaking, that might be an option. I know we tried to do a little bit, but we do, we do apologize for, for the issues there.
Okay, we have no more public commenters.
Okay. Well, I apologize. Thank you, all public commenters. We appreciate that. Are there any other comments before we close out this Agenda Item?
Yeah.
Vice President Giordano.
Yeah, I just have a question for deputy city attorneys. You know, one of the commentators, Mr. Castillon, you know, was saying that because we're not a legislative body, you know, saying we can't do certain things, are, like, are we allowed to, you know, I wouldn't say that we're drafting an amendment, but are we allowed to, like, ask the board of supervisors to put something on the ballot, would that run afoul of, like, you know, what the charter says, or, or does it?
I think you're allowed to work with board on any...
Thank you.
I believe you're allowed to work on the board on any item that you find sufficient. I know that you worked with the board to do open source voting, so similar. If you'd like to work with the board of supervisors on any legislative action, you're welcome to do so. You just can't put a ballot measure on the ballot on your own.
And then, and then if something goes on the ballot, the commission would need to be neutral, obviously.
At any point that something is, goes on the ballot, then at that point, we can't use public funds to advocate for or on behalf of a candidate or a measure, but once that ballot designation is made, that's essentially the cutoff for advocating for a ballot measure. You can provide information to the public on the ballot measure, but it has to be neutral, and it has to be unbiased.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners Dai, Commissioner Le Volce, Commissioner Parker, and Absentia, and public commenters, we appreciate your input on this topic. We're going to close out Agenda Item Number Six and move to Agenda Item Number Seven, Discussion and Passable Action Regarding the Annual Performance Evaluation of John Arntz, Director of Elections. First and foremost, we're going to take public comment on all matters pertaining to this Agenda Item, including whether to meet in closed session. So, Secretary Davis, can you let us know if there are any public commenters?
I do not see any public commenters. No public commenters.
Thank you, Secretary Davis. So we will now take a vote on whether to meet in closed session to consider this Agenda Item. Secretary Davis, please take the roll call.
I'm going to take a vote on this. President Stone?
Yes.
Vice President Giordano?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernhols?
Yes.
Commissioner Dai? Aye. Commissioner Hayden Crowley?
Yes.
Commissioner Le Volce?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker is absent.
So with six, it passes.
Yes.
Thank you. No problem. So we'll move to C, Closed Session, which will be held pursuant to round access, Section 549, 57B, and the sunshine ordinance to discuss the evaluation of a public employee. So for members of the public, just so you are aware, we're going into closed session at 8:30 PM, and we will basically turn off video and audio, so we will return, we will announce upon our return when we are back in open session. Commissioner Bernhols, will you just put a thumb up if you can hear us?
I can hear you.
Great. Okay, the time is now 8:47, or excuse me, 9:47. Wishful thinking. PM, and we are now in open session. We are moving to 7E, Discussion Vote Pursuant to Sentient Ordinance on Whether to Disclose Any Portion of the Closed Session Discussion Regarding the Public Employee Performance Evaluation. Do we have any motion? Do we need to make a motion, or do we just move straight to a vote?
Sorry. I think you can move to go back to closed session.
Sorry?
Go back into closed session.
Sorry. I didn't even know how to respond. So, I was like, I don't even know where to go from.
Yeah, I move that we not disclose any portion of the closed session.
Thank you, Vice President Giordano. Anyone else?
Second.
Second that. Thank you, Commissioner Dai, for the second. So we are now going to move to a roll call vote on the motion to not disclose any portion of the contents of closed session. Secretary Davis, will you take the vote, please?
President Stone?
Yes, sorry.
Vice President Chivam?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernhols?
Yes.
Commissioner Dai? Aye. Commissioner Hayden Crowley?
Yes.
Commissioner Le Volce?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker is absent.
Great.
We have a majority.
Unanimous. Thank you. So we will not move to, nope, we will not disclose any portion of the closed session, and that closes Agenda Item Number Seven, given that we've already taken public comment. So we're going to move to Agenda Item Number Eight, Agenda Items for Future Meetings. Do we have any comments? Commissioner Hayden Crowley?
When is the retreat?
Yes, I will send you an email.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have.
Commissioner Le Volce?
Is it possible to talk about our goals for the next Agenda meeting?
DCAs, I hope so. DCAs, that was in closed session.
Oh.
That was in, sorry. That was in closed session.
Closed session?
No, that, that was a topic, that was a content in closed session. That's okay, I just don't understand.
For the, for the sessions?
It's okay.
No, it's for the...
I understand.
And we talk about the goals that we would like to achieve as a Commission?
I understand.
Put that on the agenda.
I will take that under consideration. Thank you, Commissioner Lovolci. Anyone else?
It's the, the...
No, we're working on that. And it...
On the, the services?
I know, yeah. It will comply with all the rules, I'm very aware. Yes, I'm very aware, I know all the rules, working on it. Anyone else? Okay, let's move to public comment.
There is no one.
Okay. The time is nine fifty-one PM, and I join this meeting.
Thank you.
I was asking about John's...
No, it's just because we talked about in closed session, we just, we voted to not disclose any portion. I just think that, but it's fine.
I wasn't...